It's super awkward.
Okay. Good afternoon and welcome to our Budget Committee meeting. Today is March 12th, 2025, and the time is 6:01 PM. And I will call this meeting to order, and if everybody could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so amendment and approval of the agenda, which would be just a discussion, really, to go over the 24, 25 budget review and have discussion about that.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
And I will, and Brad will second. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, approval of the agenda. And discussion. I know the last few days, Nick, our Treasurer, Nick Vassino, Rabia, and Ted have all been meeting with each of the department heads, going over the current state of their budgets and taking notes. And they've put together a little presentation summary for us, which I see that you guys have. And I will turn it over to Ted. Ted, if you'd like to go over the last few days.
All right, thank you. So, you know, we had talked about this earlier, and we're going to see how things were looking, you know, at this point in the year. So, we, having lost Kena, it was incumbent upon us to actually do it ourselves. So, it's been, we've been working with Kena. She's, you know, she helps us out on, gets us information, and we're sending stuff back and forth with her. She's got a new job, but still backing us up. And we are, just before I get into this, just to let you guys know, as far as the budget process is going to be starting, I think in about three weeks. And we are, Moss Adams, our auditors, have provided us with a list of consultants that we can use to call on. But I have to say that, that this has been very instructive for us. Not, not easy, and nothing I ever wanted to do in my whole life. But, which is why I went to law school and not accounting school. But it's been, it's been, it's been actually really good to get, to get to this level of familiarity just with our present budget. And so, we went through, met with every, every department head. And it's always easier when you have somebody else that, that, that you can, like, palm it off on. So, we were, we were forced to dig in, learned a lot. And really, we found out that we're in pretty good shape. I mean, as far as, as far as adhering to the budget, some departments are a little bit out. But nothing, there's, you know, the issue that, that we discussed, for example, with the Sheriff's Department, with the jail last year, if you recall, they were, you know, they, they were already into overtime, and that, that problem has persisted. But it still seems to be within the parameters of the total budget. And we're looking, we talked to the sheriff and Jeremy Crone here yesterday, and we were discussing options of where we can find money within, within that department to move things around. And that was actually a very productive discussion. So, I just wanted to let you guys know that happened. It was good on all sides. So, anyway, I was just going to go through this. We, this is what, this is our synopsis for every one of the, every one of the departments. Most, many of them, there's, there's nothing at all. The stuff that we're finding, there are some, there's, are some issues that we're going to need to delve deeper into. We're still looking at, looking for more information to, to, you know, get the background we need. But the majority of the, of the comments here are just little oversights, things, you know, stuff put in the wrong, in the wrong GL account, that, that sort of thing. It's, so, we're just mostly housekeeping and some fairly not majorly material issues. The, I'll just go through it real quick. We saw, bop to no change, where the non-departmental budget for this account would likely be subject to revisions, which will be dependent on changes made elsewhere in the budget. Then we get to county clerk. We see that we're going to allocate E and R revenue to reserve revenue in order to avoid usage of restricted fund balance or grant funded expenses, or journal non-cap expenditures to elections and recording. So, existing allocation of grant revenue can cover grant expenditures. And these are just sort of, that's just housekeeping stuff. That's kind of where we're, where we're looking at. Tax collection, very minimal, not really worth talking about. Treasurer's office, nothing material to talk about. Assessor's office, we have, we're having some, there, we noticed there was a miss, basically used the wrong, wrong GL number there. Should have been for software services. You'll see, we're just adjusting a $26,000 charge from one, from one line item to another. District Attorney, nothing, nothing happens there. We, we talked to the District Attorney about their ideas for next year, but everything there is just really copacetic. Juvenile, we went through juveniles, turned out a little bit differently than they had planned. And it looks like we've got, we've got a potential shortfall within, within the department, except Wendy had, has got a variety of different things that she's already worked, she's already put in for grants and so forth, and that money is just on the way to, it just isn't here right at this point of the year. So, I don't see that, there's nothing materially necessary to do with juvenile. It's going to work itself out, and that's the way that place usually works. Road departments, one thing, we've, let's see, we, the line item here, $1.2 million for a forest, I think that, yeah, was not included. We, there, that, it's not showing up in the budget, so we're adding that. That money comes later in the year, usually in April, so we should be getting that. And we'll just, that's just going to basically update the road funds to make them accurate. Road capital improvement, same thing. Let's see, we'll go down here. I'm going to just kind of jump ahead. It says Sheriff's Reserve General Fund could be reduced to support other accounts within this fund if necessary. SAR, there were some issues with SAR, but it wasn't on, it wasn't on Sheriff's Department's side. It was on, it was on our, our side of keeping records of vehicle usage, so forth. So, we're, we're getting that adjusted. That's a problem that had been developing in the record-keeping out. Basically, the people working at the road department for finance, that's been addressed. We now have somebody who's going through all of that for the last, since about a year now, and they're going to, they're going to redo all of that. That'll be accurate shortly. Marine patrol, there were some questions about how the, the actual cost of auto liability, the way that it was being booked and, and being charged. And so, we had modified that to reflect the actual cost of the liability, and there were some questions about that. That, that also kind of leads into a thing that we'll be talking about and working on, working on as we go into the next budget cycle, which is the way that we're going to be billing administrative services. We, it's, it's, we seem to have kind of used a different method almost every year. And so, we're going to be trying to do it in a way that's more transparent, so that it's, 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 and the way that we had previously done this, and tell me if I'm, if I remember this rightly, they were, the departments were charged administrative service costs, which included county council, you know, bookkeeping, all kinds of stuff, insurance, all that stuff. They were, they were charged, they were billed based on square footage of their department and the number of employees. I mean, square footage for, I guess, rent, maybe, but, but that's, it's sort of, it doesn't seem to relate to the actual, what we're doing here is providing certain essential services to the public. So, I don't, and I don't know if that's space-dependent. Anyway, we're going to be looking at that and trying to come up with a way to more accurately. You know, if, if you're, if you're, if you're doing a service and it's, and, and you're using vehicles, should be fairly straightforward. You have people in there, their cost of employees. We're, we're working on that. We're going to try to get some outside advice on that. And that's going to be for the next budget. Right, right now, everything's, everything's, it's, it's certainly more fairly applied this year than it was in previous years. The way that it had been working was, was almost all of the other departments were subsidized in the Sheriff's Department. And I don't, I don't think that helped anybody in addressing the fundamental funding problems of this county. We need to actually know what actual costs are, like, for, like, for example, with the jail. It's going to help us all if we know how much that jail costs and how many people it takes to staff it properly, so that we're not in the situations that, that we're in. And then we all make that a priority to address. That's, that's where I hope we go with that. Anyways, so.
Just to refresh from every service. So, that, that allocation, let's just take to the jails as an example. Is that allocation would show up where under expenditures? Or is it, is it baked into the labor cost, or is it?
No, there's, there's a.
Yes, the bottom of.
Oh, I see. Okay, I got it.
Yep. Okay, so, let's see. We had talked about, let's, civil criminal patrol. We're, one of the issues that we have right now, you may have heard, there's, sheriff told us yesterday, and also I read out one of those things for the levy, that no patrol deputies are on the road now because they're all working in the jail. And so, so we're going, so we've got extra money in patrol right now and not enough money in, in the jail. And that's just the, that's just the reality of the situation. So, we're, we'll work all that out. But as, as things are going right now, I think we're just going to have to kind of ride it and see how, how that, how we have to reallocate or what it's going to take to get us through the year with that jail. And if there's money somewhere that we can find, we'll, we'll just have to do the best we can. And I, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough position for everybody to be in, but especially, especially the sheriff. So, you know, we, we empathize with that. Let's see. Restricted opioid settlements, we had 74,550. Remember, we had talked about using that for a, for a school resource officer, and that didn't work out through the Sheriff's Department, but it did work out through the, through juvenile. So, we're removing that money out of that fund and into juvenile, just kind of a cleanup scenario. Communications, we're down right now to, they're down to employees. So, that's actually sort of good for the budget, but not good for the service. And also, as the sheriff says, it's difficult with the number of, with the staff that, that they have right now, it's, it's problematic to be able to hire a new person because the trainer is actually working so many hours, there's very little time for training. So, anyway, I, I don't know, I don't know at this time how to, how, how you address that issue. I've been thinking about it, and I hope to talk to people over there about that. So, we'll maybe come up with some ideas to help them. Parole and probation, everything is great at parole and probation, as usual. Towers maintenance and operation, no change there. Towers capital replacement improvement, no change at this time. Those two things, we, if you recall from your previous quagmire of, of the budgeting, it was kind of confusing. There are towers charges and communications charges that are both in the sheriff's office and in the road department. And it, so, we're, we're going to, in, in next year's budget, we're going to try to isolate all of that into, into just the road department, keep that as separate as we can, so that it's a standalone for billing. And, and, right, we were, we were kind of looking around and depending on a bunch of departments to, to, to work us, to, to make that thing work. And it just resulted in a lot of confusion. Let's see, I think we talked about juvenile opioid funds back over here. We'll move on. Landfill, Port Orford Landfill Trust, that should be, that's closed out now, or just about? Yeah, so, that's, that's going to be a thing that's going away. Nothing to worry about there. Transient lodging tax, we did, just recently, the commissioners did vote to increase that transient lodging tax. And as I understand it, the new tax will be going into effect 90 days after the, after the, the ordinance becomes effective. So, it will actually, there will be a very small window at the end of this fiscal year that will, where there will be the higher tax rate. So, we'll need to adjust this, this, but this year to, to account for that one. We're, it's hard to predict what it'll be at this point. Event center, everything is copacetic. We're just at some, you know, basic issues that we're working through, but everybody is, everybody's going in the right direction there. The repairs have been made, or have been started. We have more repairs to make, and that's all, that's all good. Planning, we have dug ourselves out of the hole that we found ourselves in planning, and we are, we are making, we're, I think we're, we're in good shape revenue-wise right now to get us through the end of the year. We are going to want to do a different organization for next year's, for, for next year's fiscal year, which we're, we've got some, some plans in mind there. And I think that a lot of the issues that we've been having and the complaints regarding planning are, a lot of them have been, have been addressed, and I think we're going to see even fewer going forward. So, I feel good about that. Building and septic, only big change in the building department is, is that our building department is being, we're, for two big changes, we're, we're no longer involved in the septic program. That's gone back to DEQ itself. So, we're, we've tried to remove ourselves from, from that whole mess. And then the electrical inspections, that was a thing that was done by the state, and that has been, I believe that our building department has assumed those for Curry County, and they've gotten themselves, they're just finishing getting themselves certified. And that's going to be, it's going to be basically changed. We're hoping to kind of substitute the revenue that we were getting from the, from the septic program with the electrical inspections. And I think, I'm pretty confident that, that Garrett's got all that under control. He's, he's a pretty good at this stuff, so we will defer to him. Animal control, looks like there was 9,000, a little over $9,000 with expense to abatement in error, and that's going to be removed. That's the only thing with animal control that's going along, as well as can be expected with, with our animal control people, who also do many other jobs here at the county. They do love animals, so seems to be kind of working out. Surveyor, surveyor has, we've, we've been working with our new surveyor, who has brought a lot of great ideas for general funding at the county. He's, he's helped us with ideas for funding the clerk's office and through, through basic, you know, accurate fee charging and kind of bringing Curry County into the 21st century on, on a lot of how, how things are, are, how fees are assessed regarding services like the clerk's office and like, and, and especially in the surveyor's office. We've got, we've got money that is, hopefully, we're going to be able to eventually have that surveyor not be dependent on, on any general fund obligation. That's, that's our, that's what we're working toward, and Scott Fine is a great asset for us. GIS, that's also, so, we may have to put some money into GIS to, to get it through, because we're trying to, we're, we're working with Lane County on that. I, I hope down the road that we're going to be able to put some money into the GIS program, preferably through some sort of grant that we can, that we can get, because our GIS mapping is not accurate, hasn't been, been accurately input and updated over the years. So, it's, it's a recurring problem. You can't trust it. You have to go back and check in the, every time you have a, a map issue, you have to go dig through the water damaged files in the basement and to, to address it. But that's what Rabia likes to do, so it's been working out. Let's see. Tourism promotions, up to $100,000 can be removed from professional services to advertising in order to accommodate sponsorships for the upcoming touristy, tourism season. That's going along great. Parks, it looks like we're going to be able to, we're going to need to take about $20,000 from restricted funds to, to, to deal with current personnel costs to get us through the end of the year. We've just, parks have been busier than we thought, but they, the restricted fund is, is revenue that's generated by that department. So, that's, that's a self-healing problem. Emergency management, we have, we're, we're looking at that. Some changes do need to be made in that, in that department, just to, it needs to have a, I think we'd like to bring it in under the, under the basic oversight of, of the department of, or director of, of county operations, so that, so that that department will have a non-commissioner department head going forward. We're, we're talking about that. But other than that, we have a great person in there right now who's made great strides and has delivered a, a lot of the products that would, that have been outstanding for a long time. We've got our, we've got the wildfire plan. We've got that, that's, that's been signed and it is in place. And that, and we have, he's also been, been actually out there figuring out what kind of emergency services or emergency supplies we have around the county. And it was surprising to hear what we have and where it is. And he's got some ideas for some of those things. For example, he was telling me that we have a, we have a Conex that's full of things of really high-quality gas masks, for example, in case you need those. But nobody really needs those, except I would assume that the Sheriff's Department and the police departments could probably use them better than leaving them in a Conex somewhere. So, we're going to see about redistributing that stuff to, to places where they can be actively used. Aquatic safety, Luke, this is a kind of a confusing one, but Luke basically survives on grants. He's got a bunch of grants out that are working. He's, he's got some that are still out, out, they're, they're in process. He's also brought in a, a trainee through a, through an agreement with the Coast Guard. For, this guy's going to be basically working on the Coast Guard's nickel for us for the next six months. And it's going to be a big benefit. We'd, we hope to be able to transfer that into a, into a permanent position, because this aquatic safety is just a really great program and, and really helpful to the community. And it would, no problems with that. Veterans, no problems. Code compliance doesn't exist at this time. Let's see, we get over here to Commissioner's Back Office. Let's see. Oh, then we get down here to accounting. This, this is more of the indirect services issue right here. We look at the accounting, you'll see that there's a $322,000, $323,000 charge to the accounting department as indirect services. What that is, is that's the cost of our general liability policy. That's the, that's the policy premium for, for everything. And for some reason, it, it, it misrepresents the, that's not an accounting office cost. So, we're going to, we're going to reallocate, figure out a way to reallocate that into a, into a, a place that, that is more appropriate for that. You will also see down here in county council, there's a $339,000 cost. That, that is, that's also indirect services. Those are insurance-related. Those are charges from our insurance company for legal defense charges for the numerous cases that have, that, that have been ongoing, some for many years. And these are the wrapping up. Some of them are employment cases. Some of them are, are injury cases in the jail and otherwise. Some of them are, are previous employees that had, had injuries. So, we're looking at that. We want to get some advice on how to express that. Those are charges that, that the county is liable for under its, its agreement with CIS, the insurance company. But, I mean, it kind of looks like I sort of overspent my budget. But most of these things are not, they existed prior to.
We have a meeting with CIS next week.
Yeah, we, we can talk to them about that.
Talking about it.
Yep. Everything else, let's see. Public transit, we've got an audit going on with, where we're working with ODOT on, on Curry Public Transit. We're going to be doing an RFP going out here shortly to see if, if there are any other entities that are interested in, in assuming that, that service. It's just a requirement that, that we do that. I don't see anything else that's material here. Basically, all of this stuff that we are bringing, ADPEP and TPEP. So, this is, tell me again what ADPEP and, that's juvenile?
Prevention.
Yeah, yeah, okay, right. And so, that's all grant money as well. So, it's just, that's just a thing that kind of handles itself. Then, we have, we, we've looked at these other issues. There's other, other funds. There's nothing that we're, that we need to look at at this point. And also, we don't, as far as the, as far as the procedure going forward, we don't need to involve the Budget Committee in, in making these small adjustments. We'll just do that as, as, I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed, so that we're all on the same page as we go forward. And you'll know that, you know, that, that you're not getting surprised by us making these changes before we go into budget.
Yeah, I will say the one thing that's going to be, that is really beneficial is having this, this budget book that's basically, you know, three quarters of the year, expenses and revenues. And, you know, we can see that through 75% of the fiscal year, we, it seems like are in pretty decent financial shape in terms of making sure we're staying within budget in, in most of the areas. It looks like we're there. In some areas, it looks like we're very short on the revenue side, but a lot of times it's because those revenues don't hit until this last quarter, things of that nature. So, but I, number one, appreciate you guys going through and doing this exercise with all of the departments. I mean, I've been watching everybody going in and out of that room for the last few days and getting a, a very detailed look with the department heads and the elected officials about what's going on in the budget, with their budget, what they project, and what the expectation is, so that essentially, when we start going in the budget, we're going to have a pretty decent breadth of knowledge from this past year's budget, what we got going, what we got going on.
One of the things the sheriff brought up yesterday was, you know, he said, how long is the budget process going to take? And I said, we're going to try to address everything as early as possible, but we're obviously going to leave it open until the levy is decided one way or another. And then we'll, we'll make adjustments as necessary.
Yeah, well, I think, I think what we can do is we can go into budget in April. Essentially, budgeting is if, you know, as if we're moving forward without.
Right.
Because if, if we do hit, if the, if the, if the levy passes in May, then it just requires us to come back and make adjustments to the Sheriff's Department, for the most part, Sheriff's Office, and maybe some non, you know, there'll be some slight adjustments to maybe some other departments. But it won't be massive.
Right.
I think the, the majority of the, the work will already have been done, and it would just require, we won't approve anything, obviously, until after. But we can have, we can, I think we can have the bulk of the work done, at least a good idea of it.
Yeah, it makes much more sense just to go ahead and move forward.
Yeah.
Have a budget. It's much easier to add than just to.
Right. Or to wait in anticipation, and then, and then you just deal with the, the disappointment on top of budget reduction, potential budget reduction. But going, like, I think that, I don't know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like going into this next year's budget, you know, we budgeted last year off of our sustained revenues, which look like are going to be an adequate budget going into this next year, aside from patrol, which really is the big, you know, the big question mark in terms of what we do in budget for, for patrol. But outside of that, it looks like all the other, all the other departments are going to be somewhat status quo. There's going to be some adjustments here, adjustments there, but nothing major, as far as I can tell. And I don't see any big reductions.
No.
Because we are operating off of a sustainable. -because we are operating off of a sustainable revenue expectation.
Reductions happened last year.
Right.
When do you, uh, are you able to forecast in the, uh, three months of revenue, so we have, we know, but we think we're, we're got something to understand. There's a lot of timing issues with, like you said, it looks like, if you just kinda look at the numbers, we're not anywhere near 75% of revenue.
Right.
Just glancing through this, so.
So the char-
Revenue kinda drives this whole process.
Yep.
So, it's like we oughta be forecasting at least where we think we're gonna be in the year.
Right. We, and what, so we'll have, um, we'll have a forecasted carryover, because that goes into the budget. Um, and generally, um, carryovers seem to be fairly consistent. Um, I mean, I, I, I think we could probably look at the last few years of carryovers and get a pretty decent idea of where we're gonna be. It might be a little skinnier this year because of the reduced budgets, but, um, yeah, we definitely have to have an idea of the carryover expectation going into this budget.
CIS, work on expenses and then find out that we're short of revenue.
Yeah.
No. The, the, like, there's some open revenue on, on the Sheriff's Office, and that's just all, most, that's timing. There, there might be like, it might be a little low on concealed carry, the, but, but the other ones are, are money coming in just-
Your actuals through.
Right.
So now we could, like, at least attempt some forecast that we can.
Some departments began, some are like planning, it's all a matter of the, put back the business.
Right.
But a lot, a lot of people we met, what they have an idea of what grants are coming down the pipe, um, it's already.
Yeah, we can probably, we can get something together.
Yeah. And it looks like in terms of making supplemental changes, there'll be some, you know, a few things, switching GLs and, you know, things of that nature.
What was the, the, uh, I guess, five, six months, so, then place it back for, for wages, and then we had, you know, back to last year, what to use for?
So 5.4, the, or is that for, uh, PERS?
That was for PERS.
PERS has an increase, a 5.4% increase.
Can't remember what the, what the COLA was.
I, I'm not sure on the COLA.
It was somewhere around 4%.
Yeah, I, that's what I recall, but.
Yeah.
Combined. Yeah. Yep. Um, but, okay, so those are two different line items. So when we, we get an annual increase of 3%, right, that's, uh, that's our annual property tax increase, 3% is generally what we can count on. So when ex, when expenses, when expenses exceed our potential revenue, um, and I think that's probably where you're going-
Right.
Um, then, uh, we have, uh, we have issues. So, yeah, so we're gonna have to evaluate what that looks like, um, you know?
Back to your point of making this as easy as possible on the staff, I think, where we're digging to our expense, I think, you know what the revenue might look like. And then, secondly, because labor is obviously a big chunk of the, of the expenses here, factor in what that number looks like, it's probably easy to come up with, and then get some revenue forecasts, so we can see if we, we already do that.
Yeah.
Just my opinion, anyway.
Uh, no, I agree. Yeah. Yeah, we have to factor in projected, um, both sides, projected personnel expense increase, along with projected revenue generation.
All right, well, that's all I have.
Is that stairs up 10 o'clock then?
No, not, not this time. We can arrange it, we can.
You have any questions?
No, I, I'll ask, I have any questions, I'll have is, if you look at, you guys talked to insurance this week.
Yeah.
Yeah, there wasn't much of a rainy day fund.
No, and then, and for example, then, then we have another charge that, that, um, is still outstanding at the Sheriff's Office that arrived, that occurred in the previous fiscal year, and there was a, uh, uh, some kind of a hospital charge, 52,000 bucks. There's, you can't-
Yeah, 62 or 63.
Yeah, you can't budget for it, you just have to take it in the teeth. And so we're still, we're still waiting for that, to, to pay that out, but that, you know, that's, it's just one of those, it, it either happens or it doesn't, you know, that, so, I don't, I don't, I don't know how you, it just would be nice if we had a rainy day fund that would, that you'd be able to deal with that stuff, so.
Well, I feel like, I could be wrong, but I believe there's some, uh, there are, there is some, uh, legislation, um, that's, uh, that's in Salem that would allow a 90-day grace period for an individual going into jail to retain their OHP status, which for us would be great, because most of them, we don't, I mean-
That would be great.
We don't have 90-day, I mean, you, we do have 90-day. They're in custody, right, and so if, if that's the case, 'cause right now, I believe it's 72 hours or something, um, and then they lose their OHP, cut funding, but if that's extended to 90 days, then that's gonna be giant for our hospital bills.
It's, it's virtually impossible to budget for this, you know, you, it's just, it's just crazy. So that would be, that'd be great. That'd give a framework where, where you might be able to actually go forward with some, with, have a little bit of control.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. Good, good, pretty good?
Yep.
All right. Good, good. All right, then, uh, I will adjourn this meeting at 6:38 PM. Thank you.
See you, Brad.